All right, I'd like to convene the meeting of the Westboro Select Board. I'd like to offer anybody who would like to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
... To the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank Westboro TV for live streaming and recording tonight's meeting. And at this time, I'll look for anyone who's here to speak at open forum. Welcome, Mrs. Aramani.
Good evening. Joanne Aramani, Seven Meadow Road. At the last selectman meeting, I had requested an update on the meeting that the Treatment Plant Board requested with the town manager and the selectmen because that was not shared with the public. I feel that the update that was given last week was not a fair and balanced representation of really what's been going on between the BWALT and the Treatment Plant. So I would like to give my own update so that the public becomes aware. I want to make it very, very clear, I am not here as a Treatment Plant Board representative. I do not sit on the app board at all, but I do attend the monthly meetings, so I'm aware of what's going on. So here's my update for the public. In May of this year, the Planning Department held a public hearing on Section 2 for the abutters of the BWALT. Section 2 runs right through the Treatment Plant facility. The Treatment Plant was not aware that this meeting was happening. When they found out about that meeting, they asked the Director of Planning to come to one of their monthly meetings and present what was going on with that trail, and specifically what was, you know, in the, within the boundaries of the facility. So they had that meeting, they voiced their concerns, fell on deaf ears. What the Treatment Plant then did was to write a letter that was sent to the town manager and the selectmen, and outlining what their concerns were. That letter's public information. It was dated August 30th of 2024, and I'd like to just quickly list the four major areas and concerns that the Treatment Plant has. Number one, the Board is concerned about the proposed proximity of the shared use path to the existing Treatment Plant facility. The trail heads into the woods from the Treatment Plant. This will involve extensive grading and design. Two, the trail would be located between the Treatment Plant and the solar array field which supports the Treatment Plant. Electricity from the solar arrays is delivered to the plant by underground conduits which the trail would cross over. The solar arrays require regular inspections and maintenance. Service vehicles access the solar array field from the Treatment Plant access road, so those vehicles would be required to travel over the section of the trail on a regular basis. Three, the proposed location will encroach upon or be in very close proximity to areas identified for future expansion of the Treatment Plant. And four, the trail would be in close proximity to future clarifiers. An unsafe condition would be created by mixing recreational users with truck and service vehicle track, traffic. For instance, service and repair trucks will require access to the perimeter of the future clarifiers. So that letter was sent, and there was no response. Wasn't mentioned at the treat, at the selectman meeting, and they didn't get any response. A second public hearing was held in September. The Treatment Plant Administrator attended that meeting. She voiced the concerns again, based on that letter that I just read, again, fell on deaf ears. So at that point, the Treatment Plant sent a request for the town manager and a member of the selectmen to attend one of their monthly meetings so that they could again voice their concerns. They also happened to invite the Shrewsbury Town officials because Shrewsbury members sit on that Treatment Plant Board as well. The focus of that meeting was to voice concerns. It was not to discuss expansion of the plan. As I just said, expansion is one of the concerns, but the purpose of that meeting was to voice concerns about Section 2 of the BWALT running straight through the facility. And that's where we sit today with it. I'd like to also just, if I may, offer one suggestion. In the past, the Bike Committee, which is now called the Active Transportation and Safety Committee, used to come to your Board every six months, long time ago, and give updates as to what's going on. Somehow that all went away. I'd just like to suggest that maybe it might be a good idea for them to be coming in and giving you updates. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here for open forum? Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 2, excuse me, yeah, 2. Request and Accept Easement at 50 and 64 Street, Otis Street. And that'll be through the Director of Planning.
She's, she's not here, but we have a community development director.
Okay.
Welcome, Fred.
Perlinar, Community Development Director for the town. Basically, I'm just filling in, if you have questions, I presume that you have the plans. So this actually, the trails actually go back to site plan agreements that were put in place back to 2020. These trails start and kind of go around 50 Otis Street, which is next to the Hockamaka Pond, that area, go around the back of their property, and then go on 264 again, near the water treatment plant, not wastewater, the water treatment plant. So that's what's in front of you. So these have been in the works for many years.
Thank you, Fred. Any questions?
Yeah, just maybe some additional clarity just for the public. So the easements that are coming before us tonight are for 64 Otis Street and...
50.
And 50, thank you, sorry, and 50, sorry. And as Fred mentioned, these have been a long time in discussion, and my lens is really from the view of Hockamaka Pond Reuse Committee. So if you can sort of take an aerial view of the pond, you're looking down, and you're standing on Otis Street, so I'm going to just say to the right, that's the trail easement side, just for the public's benefit. It's not town property, hence why we would need an easement to access that publicly. There are existing, I'll call them walking trails, that are there. I've walked that area. I'm sure members of the public probably have too, even though there was no easement until we've signed here or until we approve it. Beautiful area for watching birding, so on and so forth, nature type walks, but the old AstraZeneca property clearly had exercise kind of, kind of, I don't know, planks and other things out there where, where their employees could go. Fred, did you want to add something to that?
No, it's, so if you're familiar with the old AstraZeneca where, where Amazon is located now, there is a paved area, a loop road, if you will, that goes around the back of their property. This is behind that.
Correct.
As I understand it, most of it, or some of it's adjacent to the pond.
Yep.
I've been told, I haven't personally walked it, so I apologize, but I've been told that there are some semblance of a trail there. That it has been there for, for some years, but it's not like a groomed.
No.
You know, you can get on there with your bicycle. It's not that type of trail.
No.
And then what happened is the property owner Atlantic Management has acquired additional properties since 20, and they agreed to, to hook up to another trail on the other side of the water treatment plant that was actually behind 64, but actually eventually, I'm told, goes to the ball fields.
Right.
Near the target, the target baseball fields.
Right. That would, that would be sort of the long-term plan. So again, while outside the scope of Hockamaka, these were very much part of kind of thinking about contiguous trails. We never like to kind of develop trails on their own, we like to have like a long-term plan. So that is the eye for how do we connect those target fields and kind of the, where there is a lot of dense housing in that part of our town to be able to connect and ultimately make their way north, southeast, west of town. The other thing that I would just add, is so on those trails, some are visibly trails, I mean, it's been probably over a year since I've walked them, so overgrowth, who knows? Some were not, some definitely need some clearing, and that's accounted for in terms of what the town can do as part of these easements. In reading the easements, I'm very supportive of this, I do want to just point out what is and what isn't allowed as part of these easements. So first of all, this is for daylight use only, and we're expected to enforce that. But it's for a walking trail 10 feet wide with a five-foot buffer on either side. And in item number two of, or Article 2 of the easement, it says, but what is excluded, non-motor, non-motorist biking, basically, you can't have a motorized bike, you can't skateboard or have skateboard-type facilities and cross-country skiing. Otherwise, it's, when you think about passive recreation, it's walking, birding, nature kind of thing. So just for the public's question, the BWALT does run down Otis. It does, that is Section 1. Then Section 2 is the part we just heard about in open forum, of course, which the Board is well aware, this is not part of BWALT. It's, and again, it is not intended to be for motorized vehicles. So appreciate the Board's indulgence to kind of provide that context.
Yeah, Perlinar, we're going to play May. So it does, there is a, can be a link to the BWALT, but it's not the BWALT, to be clear, as, as Marshall has pointed out. And there's no immediate, at least I don't know of any immediate plans for us to go out there and put a 10-foot-wide new trail out there. So we don't have anything on the docket to actually go out and make a new 10-foot trail. It's just kind of what's there, and we have the ability in the future if we want to upgrade that trail. That's what this easement allows us to do.
Just a, just a quick question, I guess, as I look at the, the diagrams, I, I see the easement drawn out, wording pointing to it saying 10-foot easement, it winds its way kind of loosely behind those buildings, as you've mentioned. I, I guess, I, I don't see any other markings here, but the way I interpret this drawing is that there's another dashed line, there's several different types of dash lines here. But there's another set of dash lines which loosely follow that easement path, and I'm just curious, is that, do we know if that's the current path system? And am I correct in thinking that there are some areas that the easement is directly or directly next to, or actually where the current rough path system is? And then other areas where the easement diverges from what the current path is, maybe there's a newer, more effective way to get through the area? And, and you've walked it, Shelby, I haven't, so I don't know if you have...
Yeah, so I think the, the idea was to utilize, again, thinking long-term, we'd have to do some trail clearing, would be to utilize the trail system. Some of them are little loops, you can see from the drawing, and others are more of a, a long meandering path that go around, I think that's headed westbound, if you will, toward, along Hockamaka, along the shoreline. So it's intended, long-term, and again, this ties back to the Hockamaka Pond Reuse Committee, is to create a contiguous loop around Hockamaka. That's why we were so interested as part of that committee in, in this work that was done as part of the site plan. So there are multiple trails within this easement allowance, if you will, as well as some that are very, I'll say loosely defined as a trail.
Right.
If you were to walk through there, you'd probably need a saw to do so, a bit overgrown.
Does this get us all the way to the target parking lot? Or does this...
Not, not, not currently, I mean...
Well, it's not.
I think it gets you to the ball fields closer to the, well, you must be able to get near that area.
Just because I know that, you know, you've got...
I believe it comes out in the Coaches parking area.
Okay.
And...
But we're not crossing another piece of property here. I know that, you know, for example, Court Harbor has a section of property there, I'm not sure.
No.
That's not on the diagram, so I don't kind of have a reference point.
It doesn't, Cole Harbor is, is forward of that, if you're closer to Otis Street.
Okay.
64 is adjacent to the ball fields.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yes, and actually, there was conversation when the site plan was done for, and I'm getting way off track, I apologize. When 64 was brought forward for a site plan, there was some conversation of expanding the parking for the ball fields into 64. That didn't really materialize, but...
So the long-term is that, is that there would be connectivity to those fields, right? So...
There is a path, even though the Little League fields are private property, there is a path from the parking lot in the fields up to the Park Apartment Complex.
There is, correct.
And so if, when this gets fully developed, you would actually have a walking path that would connect all the way down to Smith Valley Parkway and the commuter station.
So saying that, is it, is it correct to understand that we, we are going to need one more easement, or another easement, or easements to get from Park through the private property of the baseball fields down to this?
I don't know that answer with certainty.
I don't know.
I'd have to check.
Possibly.
We'd have to check with the Planning Board on that.
So, yeah, what you're not seeing here, again, it's kind of, I don't want to get too far astray here with the Board, but it does go through the water treatment plant on the back end, like the high end.
Yeah, I saw that, yep.
What's been alluded to is there's some conversation that eventually, there's a, there's a trail that goes along the, our road that leads to the water treatment plant that's actually a paved walkway. That doesn't connect to here right now, but someday in May, so you could actually go from this trail somewhere around the water treatment plant, all the way up that trail adjacent to the Toll Brothers Development, and get to the train station.
Yeah, it's a real pretty area. When I first joined the Board, I actually went for a tour of the water treatment plant, and there's a wellhead back there as well, and, you know, I think there's some areas there. And it looks like, you know, obviously, this drawing, for the sake of the community, we can't see how that actual connection between these two easements happens because the water treatments kind of block that out right here. But there is a, to Fred's point, I think, an expectation that this will all connect together. So it makes sense.
Long-term.
And, and I, and I should add that our, our DBW Director, Chris Pant, has also been part, certainly is part of site plan and all that, but he's very aware of wellheads and pumping stations and security around that. So there are no development plans in place, this is sort of the, working with a business as they're developing their property to think long-term and ideal connectivity to existing residential as well as recreational assets and, and economic centers.
Perfect. Any additional questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll look for motion. Thank you, Fred.
I move pursuant to Article 24 at the 2024 Annual Town Meeting, and Article 15 at the 2024 Special Town Meeting to approve and execute the easement documents for 64 Otis Street and 50 Otis Street.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item three, Historical Commission Appointment. There is one voting member and two non-voting associate member positions, is my understanding, that are open right now. So this is for a position for the voting member.
That's right. And you have two names listed on the agenda, but Emily and Zola have just gone, so just leave the stuff to them.
Okay, terrific. Just real quick, I'll just remind the community that the Historical Commission is a legal body formed under Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 8D, and is mandated to protect and preserve historic structures, properties, cemeteries, and archaeological sites in the town of Westboro. The Historical Commission office contains extensive research files and reference library, and the latter includes information on the town's history, its historic properties, and its residents of note, as well as information on places and events dating from 1643. So with that said, I see Ms. Allen has risen to speak. You're welcome to.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. I'm Chris Allen. I'm delighted to see you tonight. I am applying for the voting member of the Westboro Historical Commission. For the last half century, I've been involved with local history in Westboro, particularly writing the history of Westboro on the beaten path, which is now digitized and used in schools as well as other research people. In the, I've been involved since 1975 in the Bicentennial Commission and continue to be involved in Westboro history in various ways as president of the Westboro Historical Society for two, two presidencies, and I continue to be its program chairman now. Over the years, I've written a two-hour bus tour of Westboro, which you're welcome to take anytime, and as well as walking tours, most recently chalk it up to history, which was a walking tour of Parkman and Church and West Main as far as the architecture and the famous people who have lived in the homes in Westboro. So now I am respectfully appealing to you to be appointed as a member of the Westboro Historic Commission as one of the voting members.
Well, thank you, Ms. Allen. I appreciate it, and certainly your years of town support and knowledge, I certainly appreciate it personally. So thank you. I'll look to the board to ask any questions or make any comments.
Make a motion?
Sure.
Move to appoint Christina Allen to the Historical Commission for a term to expire June 30th, 2027. Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you again, Ms. Allen.
Thank you.
Moving on to item four, Community Center Timeline and Next Steps.
Can I just ask for clarifying? So the commission also has two non-voting associate positions as well, but there, there's only one more spot open, is that my understanding? Did I?
Well, the town website shows three, so my understanding is one was the voting. Though we just voted on, there's two.
Non-voting associations.
Okay, so two non-voting members.
But all voting members are now.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Sorry.
That's good. Thank you. Christie, did you want to?
Uh, sure. So at your last meeting, we had discussed the community center project and the potential delay of that project. So that, this, the community center project and the library project were not on the same town meeting warrant in March. I think there was some general consensus by the board that, that your interest is to not have both projects on the upcoming town meeting warrant, and that there is an interest in having the library use the lower level of the community center as temporary space during their renovation project, assuming that it gets funded. But what was not decided was how long the delay of that project would be. The reason that that's important is as we look towards the library potentially using that space, we would need to identify what part, what part of the lower level would be available to them, or would it be available in whole? So we did meet today with folks from both the library and the community center design team, as well as folks from the library building committee and some staff to look at the lower level of the community building. We also had the fire chief and his fire protection engineer, as well as the community development director and the building commissioner, just to talk about what might need to be done in order to fit that space up for a temporary space. Essentially, I think both the fire department and the building department feel comfortable that we could move forward with either of the two sort of options that we're talking about. One being the library using the entire lower level for temporary space, and the other being to potentially put up either a permanent wall, because as, as we've discussed, phase one would have a wall going sort of down the middle of the building, because we had the phase one space and then the future space, or some sort of construction wall. So both, both departments feel that that's something that we could explore. And I think the library building committee, my understanding is that they are very, are interested in using that space for their temporary relocation. Their relocation needs are about 12 to 18 months. So if we were to delay the entire time that they were displaced from the library, it would be about 18 months, which would put this project, the earliest it would be on a town meeting warrant would be fall of '26. You have in your packet the email that we received from the community center architect back in November that we discussed at your last meeting, with several points about the impacts, about potentially extending the timeline in addition to escalation and cost. And then you also have an email that, that he sent yesterday, which really gives an update on some recent bids that have come in in other communities being lower than what was anticipated. Just as a reminder, we have funding for the community center project through, through, to get us through bid documents for March. Obviously, if we were to delay the project, we wouldn't put it out to bid, but we would continue to, to work through the design, which would get us almost to complete design with updated cost estimates in January. We would, we would want to continue that work through January, February, because I think if we were to stop right now, one of the concerns that has come up is that if you were to completely stop the design where it is in the future, whenever we were to bring it back, there could be different people working on the project from the design team. There could be sort of the momentum that we have right now related to the community engagement could be lost. So all of the feedback that we've gotten and have heard, that's what people, that's what our design team's working on right now. So that's, so their recommendation is to get that completed. We have the funding for it. And then the design would need to be reviewed in the future at whatever point we decided to bring it forward, to make sure it was, continued to be compliant with, with codes at that, at that time. And I think that's really all the information that I can give to you, except that I know, you know, if we are, for the community center project, I'll just sort of speak for that. We're trying to, we'll continue to work through, through, through that design and how we've laid it out over the next couple of months with the community engagement sessions, but, but trying to understand which projects we might bring forward in March. And one in particular, which we've also brought to the capital planning committee, is the replacement of the rooftop units. That's a, that can be done sort of as a standalone project, and we think that it is prudent to bring it forward in March regardless of when the full phase one is done, because we have the incentives available from the utility, which current estimates would take the $800,000 project and give us a rebate of $500,000. So we want to be able to take advantage of those incentives, and it's something that we would need to do regardless of, or we want to do regardless of the fit out of the building. We own the building, and, and really it could be, it would serve us to move forward with that. And then also, just as an aside, the pool project is also on the capital plan.
Thank you, Christie. Any questions, comments?
I saw, I've been looking at the.
Sorry, and as the representative of the library building committee, mind if I make a comment first?
Sure.
So the library building committee met this afternoon at 3:30. Members present voted unanimously to, to use the community center as the temporary library. However, we deem, you know, whether, whether we decide it's, you know, six months by themselves or for the entirety of their project. So I just wanted to let folks know that before we get into discussion. Go ahead.
Nope, I just had a question, discussion question, but just looking at the most recent, yesterday's letter that we got from the architect, seemed to be that what he was suggesting is not to, at this point, not to officially delay, even off this town meeting, based on numbers that they're seeing due to construction law, due to the high interest rates. So talking about Framingham Community Center, bids came in 20% below, and another town community center took advantage of the bidding climate and realized a $4 million saving. So just I understand that. We had talked at our last meeting, it was delay. If I'm reading this, the suggestion, again, we, to us was continue the path which we talked about, but not at this point, fully vote to delay it off town meeting, because if we can see significant savings, it may be something we want to bring.
Yeah, so, right. So you didn't take a vote last time, but his, so his suggestion is to wait until we get the updated cost estimates in January for the board to make a decision based on that.
So the challenge with that is the library building committee needs to plan. Because if we don't delay the project.
But I guess I would ask, so I thought that too, what is the timing around the planning? Because the vote for the library is in March, nothing can be done, like leases couldn't be signed external to the town. So I understand the need of like, let's check the box and know where we're going, but is there any issue with at least following that path to kind of get bid documents in in January? Impact to the project?
I, there is some in that, so they put the RFP out for temporary library services. They've received responses. They need to put out the RFP for moving services and determine exactly, to be able to describe exactly what that's going to be, plus whatever fit out is necessary. So our decision impacts potentially, you know, that third piece, is to how the space would need to be fit out based on whether or not it was shared between them and the community center or not.
And is it the sense of the library building committee that, that if we, if we were to get detailed cost estimates, as the architect is suggesting, in early January, that that would not allow enough time for the library building committee to do its work, to have the fit out moving elements delivered in time for annual town meeting to be ready for that? Is that not?
So, so sorry, so in exactly, in January, and they're saying early January, what, so, so let's assume it's sometime during January, then you need to finish whatever your request for proposal is for those services, put it out to bid, allow a certain amount of time for responses, and then receive those responses, and then you're really pushing up against town meeting.
But don't we, um, I thought that as part of the project, those, those estimates were already known.
Well, fit out is determined by the space, who's, who's habitating the space with them, like, so for the library itself, everything's known. For the temporary space, everything isn't known.
You, the library building community needs to know how much space they have
Yeah.
to plan the move. And so the question is, when do they need to know that?
Right.
And is it before January?
Well, I guess let me take a different tactic. What is the benefit to us pushing hard for the January date and not, like, I think we could still take a, an approach of continuing the work, as Christie said, that we can continue on this path, potentially then not rush to January. I mean, maybe that's, that's it, but maybe there's a little more time to. There's nothing magical about January if we're not going to go to town meeting, is what I'm saying, in March, regardless. But.
I do think that those timelines, though, are already established for the design team. So, so regardless of what the board votes, they'll still be meeting, they're still planning to meet those dates.
I guess the other issue is, in January, really all we'd be getting is estimates.
Right. I think the, as I read through the piece, was we'd get estimates from their team, and then you'd still have to go to design bid if we thought those estimates looked advantageous to us, but that doesn't, those are just estimates. The right numbers are kind of hard bid numbers, which we wouldn't get until, if we decide to go that route, we wouldn't get until right before town meeting.
Yeah, I mean, for me, I guess, is the question is, I don't know that they would shift that much between then and fall town meeting, but if it does come up that things are advantageous early in the new year, then does it behoove us to ensure that we go for next fall rather than waiting two years?
Yeah.
So in, in mapping this out, I think it's important for the public to, so I guess I'll just say out of the gate, my, my thought is that the feedback that I've heard from the public is that, one project at a time. And so while I'm still wholeheartedly supportive of the ultimate development and build-out of the community center, I think the, the library needs to go first. I think the public needs to understand if we delay the community center until the library project is complete, then we're talking about 22 months, which would bring us to fall town meeting 2026. That's the, about the library completion date. That's when we would bring this article forward to, on the community center. And then we'd be looking at, based on the estimate of the construction of phase one of the community center, as it's been presented now, December 2027. So I don't like that extended timeframe at all. I think once people start using the building, even the second floor, and, and in some capacity of wholly or partially for the library and the first floor, I think people are going to want that to go forward faster. And maybe we can, maybe there's room to move it up, you know, to March town meeting in 2026. But at this point, given what's before us, given the pressures on taxes and concerns with the economy and lots of other things, I'm, I'm of a place to say, let the funded design work continue, as Christie presented. We can receive the cost estimates, but that I would, I would not be supportive of even contemplating this being on the March 2025 annual town meeting.
I tend to agree with that. So the two options are, do we plan on the library using the entire first floor, which sets a minimum time of 18 to 24 months before the community center work can begin, or do we allocate a portion for the library so that, whether it's fall town meeting 2025, annual '26, fall '26, when the timing's right, if the timing's feasible prior to the completion of the library renovation, we could go out to bid, get contract documents, and begin the work. We, so, you know, one of the suggested motions was that, at least until fall 2025 special, special town meeting, it doesn't mean we have to bring it forward at that, in the fall of 2025. So we can say, have the library use the backspace, set it up so that, should we be able to or want, and want to. set it up so that should we be able to or want, and want to start work on the community center in twenty-six, instead of waiting till twenty-seven, that's an, that's an option that'll be open to us.
Does, has the library indicated whether or not there's any cost savings for them to use the entire first floor versus fitting out a portion of the first floor?
Well, one of the things that comes into, one of the things that comes into play is the currently only handicapped accessible entrances through the front. Right, so if they have the entire floor, they can continue to use that. If we then build out in the front where the senior centers plan to go, then either there's some sort of tunnel through that construction that allows them to use that entrance, or we need to make the loading area handicapped accessible. Now, at some point in the future, when the veterans have that backspace, yeah, I'm of the belief that we're probably going to need to make that entrance handicapped accessible anyway, but it allows us to defer that.
That's a great question, and I, I'm glad to see Fred here, because I, that makes me think, I'm wondering, is there a requirement on egress for more than, for more than one handicap space for a space the size that we're talking about? Because if it was just the one, right, are we required to have two? And therefore, the discussion or, you know, about the back of the building is also in play at that point. Do you know the answer to that, Fred, or? Glad you stayed.
Yeah, so am I. Fred and I are a community and value director. So generally by the Architectural Access Board, you have to provide the, a number of egresses that are required for the space to be accessible. So for instance, if it's, generally if it's under fifty occupants, you only need one egress to be accessible. If it gets over that number, actually, I could be off on the number, but whatever the number is, if you need two means of egress out of the space, they're supposed to be both accessible. There are ways around that too, though you can ask for variances through the AAB. Especially where it's a, it, typically if it's going to be a brief occupancy, you know, less than a couple of years, it may not make full sense to, to rehab the whole thing for accessibility.
Right, I guess my, my, my question boils down to this. If I'm hearing Sean correctly, there's right now currently only one handicap egress on the first floor for that space. So regardless if we build out or divide the space or use the entire space, there would be a requirement, because I suspect if your fifty, individual, if your fifty occupancy number is correct, I would expect that this temporary library spaces needs to be able to accommodate more than fifty people.
But there's only one at the Forbes Building, and there's only one here.
There's, there's an, there's an emergency exit out the back as well, which I think probably covers the second, you know, it means of exiting the building.
Yeah, you're really getting into the weeds of the accessibility.
Yeah, I don't want to go too far down the weeds.
Well, so the, the short answer to that, there is, there is some possibility of also accessing what accesses the second floor now. So you may have to put a breakthrough in that space too. So there are, there are some answers to your questions. To my knowledge, nobody's done a deep dive on what all those answers are.
So to me, this comes down to a question, put timing aside for a moment. It comes down to side, the question, I think that we were also looking to get from the Library Committee in regards to what is the actual space requirement, right? I think there was, was it ten thousand square feet, I think it was, what I remember?
They can fit into the back space.
So the, in my mind, from a pure construction piece and the allowing us the flexibility to do phase one of the future build out, I, I, I want to try to avoid a situation where impacted by, the, the community center's build out is impacted by a delay on the library. Right, let's just say things take a little longer there than expected, and now we can't start the work on the community center because, of phase one, because they've got the whole space. Right, so to me, there's an advantage to breaking that space down to a smaller size, even if it requires putting a tunnel in, even if it requires putting in a second egress for the handicap access. To me, that's important. I, I, and then in regards to the timing piece of it, I am completely supportive of holding off on the community center in March. I do not think it's appropriate right now. I, I believe Shelby said it way better than I'm going to, the library should go first. And even if that requires a vote on community center, you know, in, in, in spring of twenty twenty-five, twenty-two, excuse me, twenty twenty-six or later, that's, that's reasonable to me. It gives the library time to get into their space, fit it up, get into it, make sure it's operating the way it needs to operate, and the community then can, obviously, as we've talked about already, have more time and exposure in the building, which will, I think, be a benefit to the community center as a whole. So just some thoughts there.
Yeah, no, I, I think that makes sense. I think as, as part of libraries fit up, you know, the request is that they place the, the racks, the book racks in that backspace in, in case it is needed, and then they can program in the front, you know, create some meeting rooms and things in the front, things that could be easily, yes. That's the word I'm looking for.
Well, I mean, to speak for you, no, well, that's, to me, that's the best of both worlds, right? Because again, it's only temporary space, can we all live through, you know? We're, you know, I, I'm concerned with the, the darkness of no windows in the back for eighteen months. From a work perspective, from an employee perspective, from a community use perspective. But if the things that are hardest to move are in that back section, and if if, I'll say best case scenario, if you're a fan of the community center and we go early in March twenty twenty-six, there would be some flexibility to potentially change the size of library space, I don't know. And we're not working under any grant programs for, from the state, so they can't really dictate that, so that's good. I mean, again, that, there's money and cost and all that, but, but I think it creates some flexibility.
Right, I would say the one other thing to consider is, so the library's in there, it's being used actively, and then we come in with the community center. The initial work, it would probably require some work off hours in order to get the wall up. You know, get partitioning up and, and to protect the library space from the construction. So there is typically some escalation in cost by having folks work off hours. So that would need to be factored in. Just, just to get.
Or the library could just help be in operation for while that wall is being built. I don't know how long it takes to build a wall, I'm not being watched.
I don't know either. I don't know either, but everything seems to be longer and more expensive than that. So I'm not guessing.
But I mean, again, I think this is where we sort of say not ideal, but if, if, if it was, if that needed to take place. We shut down during COVID and found alternative ways to service the community, we could do that again.
It just related to the comment about the, the natural light currently, because the Stein Mart had walls in front of the windows in the front, and they, and those are still up for the displays that they had in the front. There really is very little natural light into the space at all. It really just comes through those couple doors. In talking to the library director, I mean, certainly, that's just sort of initial conversations, but there could be a benefit to using that display space for, for the library. And so I'm not sure that there would be a lot of natural light regardless.
That's a good point.
No, I appreciate the discussion. I think in listening to it and seeing the note that we talked about earlier, I think my take right now is to go with kind of allowing the library to occupy the rear area, the low, lower levels we talked about. That's where, where the circulation would be, and then, you know, use the front space for now, as you talked about, kind of as temporary, and it may be longer term if we don't move forward. I think it does make sense for us based on kind of experts that we've hired to go down the path of the delay to at least fall twenty twenty-five. So I agree not going this meeting. So I guess I disagree a little bit with their thing, but I think we go through the process here, we hear in January. And, you know, then we can decide as a board whether it makes sense to think about moving something forward in that fall twenty twenty-five town meeting, and at least giving ourselves the flexibility than voting today to delay it eighteen months, because we don't know what will happen. I think the town should, and we should represent the town if there's some significant saves that we earned, or at least have the town and have discussions about that. But I think that can wait, you know, a six-month window to at least fall of twenty twenty-five. But we could decide in January when we see numbers too, that it doesn't make sense, but I think at least it gives us, we maintain that flexibility at this point. So I guess my take here would be to go with allowing the library to move forward with the rear area of the lower level, building that out. And then, you know, delaying it at least until twenty twenty-five fall town meeting, and perhaps longer.
I'd be supportive of that.
Can I make a motion?
Sure.
No, 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 we can discuss.
So I moved to delay the community center project for at least six months with a target no earlier than the special town meeting in October twenty twenty-five to ask for funding and further to make the back portion of the lower level of the community center available to the library for temporary relocation space for the duration of the renovation project.
I, I should have said to ask for funding for construction, because I, I do think we want to, we'll want to move forward some other pieces.
Funding for construction.
So I got a question about that. Would you want to make a, you want a second?
I, I don't understand the funding for construction, sorry. I probably missed something, but.
I thought that's what the RFP that they were talking about going.
So there are a couple of things, right?
It just says, right now, it just says for funding, and there are a couple of community center things that we would likely ask for in March.
So the, the rooftop units you mentioned?
The rooftop units and the pool.
So maybe the, maybe the motion, let me, let me re-. Maybe the motion needs to clarify to ask for community center funding, because I, I, I see that the rooftop, the rooftop chillers is being the community centerpiece. And and when we talk about the relocation, the, for the relocation of the space for the duration of the library renovation project, I think that's maybe a nuance here that we're missing.
I would say, I would just amend the motion for funding the completion of phase one of the community center. Which doesn't prevent us from doing the rooftop units and building the temporary divider space.
Right, and, and my, my thought on these other pieces, pool improvements, pool fixes, whatever we're calling it, the rooftop, the wall, those to me are very much part of the community center, those are not part of the library project. Even though the wall would benefit the library, if, but it would, it's really intended to be part of phase one as we've discussed it, as it's designed so far.
Do we know if the rooftop chillers need to be a place for the temporary library space to be, so it's fully operational and can be effective?
Yeah, the recreation department is there right now.
Yeah, no, but I mean, the first floor as well, if in the middle of the summertime, hundred-degree weather, it's able to cool that building, no problem, okay. So I think we were saying the same thing, but that's okay.
Could you restate the motion, just, because there was a lot, I know, go back.
Okay, so I moved to delay the community center project for at least six months with a target no earlier than the special town meeting in October twenty twenty-five to ask for funding for the completion of phase one of the community center project. And further to make the back portion of the lower level of the community center available to the library for temporary relocation space for the duration of the library renovation project.
Second.
So my only concern with the motion as presented is is the specificity on the lower level back portion. Because if I'm the library, I'm like, so what does that mean? Does that mean we can't use any of it for other programming? So I, I know what our intent here is, I think it's like, things that are going to be hard to move back portion, because we want some flexibility as we, as the motion discusses, but.
Do you want specificity on like square footage?
Well, I, I don't know.
Well, I would say we're guaranteeing them the back portion for the full duration of their project. We're not guaranteeing the front, that's why we need the flexibility.
That's what that motion, we can, flexibility can come off.
And when we say back portion, just to be clear, we're talking about, when I look at the drawings, the way I'm understanding this is we're talking about that wall that right now, if I remember the architectural plans, is it's, it's the, it's the future build out area and beyond that.
Everything beyond phase one.
Everything beyond that point back towards where the future Veterans Center would be, et cetera, all that area.
The big performing room, whatever.
Yes, okay.
The veterans offices.
So I want there, I mean, without putting in specific square footage, I just want to give the residents kind of, and the library committee, an idea of what we're talking about here.
Bathrooms are back there, offices are back there.
Do we need to amend this motion again to Christie's point about the front space, the front display area to include their access to that as well?
No, because the, the, the building is a the town manager can allow people to utilize town buildings, and so we would just, I would just work with the library.
I like Sean's, we're guaranteeing, yeah, for the duration.
Yeah, and if, if in the event, hey, we need to start our project now, and we need access to that front display area,
we'll all be over.
We rely on Christie to say, hey, you know, we need to.
And we're going to save money, but we're all going to go move things. It's not hire professional movers.
Holiday store. Okay, so we got the motion and the seconds. Any further discussion on the motion? Sorry?
I think it's good.
Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much.
Ed's here, so I didn't know if you wanted to.
Ed, would you like to mention anything? You're welcome to come up.
Three words, maybe? Ed Baldwin, Twenty-Five Mount Pleasant Street, I'm the chair of the Library Building Committee. I want to thank you very much for the decision. We're more than happy with it. And with this, we can move ahead with planning, and we can also start working with the rec department and their architectural advisors to figure out, you know, the, how to transition in October, you know, for next year, whenever that happens, assuming that it does happen. So thank you very much.
Thank you for all your help with this too.
Can I just ask a question? Christie, then, the items that you talked about that we potentially want to move forward with would be coming through as part of our annual town meeting planning then?
Yeah, for March, so the, the pool was submitted as a capital request, so that has gone through the process. And then we did, I did let the capital planning committee know that we were interested in moving forward with the rooftop units. And so I think, I think those are, right now, those are the only two projects I can think of that we would want to move forward in March.
And just as an FYI, the, the rooftop units were not part of our vote last night, because we don't have details on them, but it was introduced as something that still may come forward, and we still have time for that, but I'll, but the pool was there, and just as a note, that the pool was part of the recommendation of the capital expenditures planning committee to move.
So it was voted, I know you might be providing this as an update later, but it was voted favorably?
Correct, to present it to the town manager, which is the process we go through, but it did come out as one of the recommended projects that was presented for twenty twenty-six funding.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item five, request and approve meeting minutes November twelfth and November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you, Sheila, very much for due diligence on the notes. Moving on to the town manager report.
Brief report tonight, so the first is the Westboro mobile update. So on November twenty-fifth, we sent a letter to Mobile, making them aware of certain requirements to update the submitted parking plan based on comments from town departments. This plan is due to our office no later than noon on Friday, December sixth. The board will then hold a hearing on, at your next meeting on December seventeenth to consider the submission, as well as renewal for the calendar year twenty twenty-five of their class two license.
Christie, given the, the history on this one, has that, was that sent to Mobile, or was it sent to their attorney, or both?
Both.
Thank you.
We are actively working on the twenty twenty-six budget, so last month, the finance director and I met with all the department heads. We'll be finalizing the budget over the next couple of weeks for distribution of the town manager.
of the town manager recommended budget on December 21st as required by charter. Assistant town manager has been supporting the capital expenditure planning committee who completed their review of capital requests at their meeting last night. Um, both the budget and capital plan hearing will be held in the month of January at one of your meetings as we typically do. Um, and then the last item I have is just an update on some upcoming select board meetings because we do have some extra select board meetings and we also had change in December. Um, so the regular meetings being December 17th, um, January 14th and January 28th. And then on January 16th, we have a joint meeting of the select board and planning board to discuss BWALs. January 30th uh, is currently the schedule for the budget summit, which is the all day budget meeting with the select board and advisory finance committee. And then just a note to the public, um, that the board is going to start holding some executive sessions um, during off cycle weeks at 8:00 AM, um, just in order to get that work done in the morning, instead of at night. Yes.
Not tired.
Thank you, Christie. All right, I'll kick things off with issues and correspondence. Um, I'd first like to express my condolences to the Sylvester family on the passing this week of one of Westboro's most charismatic and dedicated residents, Bob Sylvester. He was always a pleasure to talk with and in those conversations, I will, I always learned so much about the history of the town and all the great work he supported from the senior center to the Knights of Columbus and beyond. Bob's charisma and dedication will be missed across the town. I'd also like to remind everyone that the overnight parking ban is in effect starting December 1st through April 1st, 11:00 PM through seven AM. No person shall park or be permitted to park a vehicle on any street between the hours of 11 o'clock in the evening and seven o'clock in the morning for a period of more than one hour. And with the upcoming uh, snow arriving on Wednesday night, I would just ask residents to please keep that in mind so that our streets can be kept clean and safe. That said, I'll look for other issues and correspondence. Anybody else?
I have something, I'm just making sure I got the BWAL meeting in the calendar before I forget.
So I'll provide a quick update. Um, the um, active transportation safety committee meeting met on Monday. And um, primary areas of conversation, I did join about 15 minutes, 15, 30 minutes late, I forget now. Um, but uh, they talked about their review of the Park Street project that we had reviewed, the Starbucks proposed um, site development. And uh, so they talked that they, you know, had reviewed that, that they submitted a letter to the planning board. So that was part topic of of conversation. Um, there's a safe routes to school initiative in process for the high school. So that meeting is, um, there's several meetings, there's a site walkthrough, et cetera, that that occur. Um, that is scheduled for sometime in the next couple of months or so. And um, there was um, some conversation around and some questions around the downtown. There there was some confusion and Christie, I'll take this offline with you and maybe talk with Jenny around the downtown redevelopment initiative versus the downtown Rotary Initiative. So we'll we'll talk offline. There was some confusion as to.
And the wayfinding.
And and wayfind, yeah, so there, so I think that they just need some clarification. And I wasn't able to. Well, that's okay, we can talk, um, um, and I did, I did ask um, the committee to, as new site plans come up, because their their comments really around the Starbucks location were primarily focused on BWALs and while it runs right near theirs, we know that when they're looking at site plans, it should be a bit more holistic around just pedestrian access and other means of accessing and safety and all that. So, um, oh, there was one more, um, evidently there are some new signs, maybe someone of the nature of 15 to 20 that were provided by the state that asked for a safe shoulder, safe space, sounds like Alan has seen a couple of them. And um, the ATSC is working with, uh, needs to go back with DBW and just clarify kind of placement of a couple of them, so anyway, so that has been done. And I just want to thank the recreation department, our economic development coordinator, DPW, police, um, um, for all of their help and collaboration with the Rotary Club uh, to make the downtown um, winter lights event on Sunday, December 1st such a success. Like everyone had a great time and it really looks beautiful out there, so thank you. And the businesses, I should, for for their sponsorship and families as well, thanks.
Anyone else?
Um, just a couple of updates. Um, quick, the municipal building committee um, did hold a meeting week before Thanksgiving um, and uh, voted the last change order for uh, the closeout of the Forbes Municipal Building Project. So that is complete and voted on and accepting of that final change order, which again, um, as the board knows, but for the public, um, did not, was not a cost to the town, but basically closing out with the remaining surplus, in essence, remaining with the town and not uh, nothing further to be paid. So in essence, it was a change order with a negative amount to it because the money saved with the town wasn't paying it out. But that is closed out, so that was um, good for that. Um, and then, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, the capital expenditures, uh, we've met the last three Mondays. Uh, thank you to Kim, um, as well as John Steinberg. Uh, for folks to know, John will be taking over kind of management of that committee going forward. Um, so he was in training at this point, but um, we did meet, we met with all the department heads uh, that had capital expenditures. Um, again, this is a multi-year plan, but what we focused on last evening, which was um, to make a recommendation of what we would uh, submit to the town manager for inclusion in the budget package for her pieces was just those fundings for um, 2026. Um, so we did uh, do that, the total that came before us, um, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but we're roughly slightly north of $2 million, 2.2 million. Our recommendation for what we included came in at about 1.4, 1.41 million. So nothing, not everything was included. Um, uh, we did have quite a bit of discussion um, among the committee members, but it was a majority uh, vote to move uh, what was uh, brought forward. And again, so folks know, folks can watch that, that was recorded and is available on Westboro TV. Now, last night was taped, it will be available on the website. Um, but just again, for the process, I think the board knows, but we do have, and we've used this for a number of years, we have criteria um, that each uh, voting member of the municipal, um, of the capital expenditures meeting, after meeting with all and receiving all the packet of information, uh, takes that back independently, um, fills out uh, their ratings on each project, um, submits that in uh, at this point to Kim, who consolidates that all down for us to review. Um, so we see individual ratings um, by raider one, raider two, whatever, not with uh, names at this point, but also then a consolidated um, average of those. And we use that again to help us and aid us in the discussion. So, um, that was processed. We are at this point um, concluded with that main part, but we do know that there are, that we will um, probably have subsequent uh, meetings prior to town meeting um, to, uh, if there's other things that come up, but typically we also meet before town meeting um, once the warrant set to vote uh, support, um, hopefully support of the warrant articles as well. That's all I had.
Good, thank you.
Very briefly, from the Affordable Housing Trust, um, earlier this month, we hosted members of our um, elected delegates, State Senator, um, Michael Moore, actually Jamie Eldridge, who used to represent, joined us as well. Um, and representatives, um, from our representatives' offices as well. We did a tour of some of the physical sites that the Housing Trust is actively involved with or would like to be involved with, talked about the projects and some of the issues we're facing. Um, it was some effective advocacy, particularly around the state's current priority for larger projects. Um, given the nature of Westboro and the properties that we expect to be available, we don't expect to have, you know, units, you know, developments with 30 to 50 affordable units that the trust would be involved with. Um, you know, we're looking at combining two properties now to get 10. And the fact that the state's saying, well, if you're less than 30, we're not going to help with financing is a little bit problematic. And so we've gotten some good advocacy there. So I want to thank them for joining us in doing that tour and taking on that issue, um, particularly as they look to see what bonds are issued and how much of the housing bond bill will be funded in the next few years. Um, also, um, hopefully by the time we meet again, our emergency rental assistance program will be up and running. Um, it appears everything's in place right now. We're doing what needs to be done to get the money into the right account so it can be available. We can start marketing the program and we're expecting to launch the down payment assistance program for home buyers in January. And so there's still some legal work that needs to happen there as well.
Yeah, quick, um, so I I think we covered the Library Building Committee today. Um, the end, the Economic Development Committee met this morning, um, covered a few things. There was an announcement by our planning director regarding the Worcester Regional Transit Association project. I know folks are aware of this. Um, the project is called Connecting Communities and is basically trying to connect Shrewsbury, uh, Westboro and Northboro through uh, a potential transit project. And if you go to the planning director's website on the town website, you'll see that there is a virtual public meeting set up for Thursday night at 7:00 where um, they are going to uh, present their recommendations for folks. So just want to make people aware of that. Again, that's Thursday, December 5th at 7:00 and the link is available on the planning director's portion of the town website.
Show me, you say the Worcester Regional Transit Authority is presenting? Okay.
Yes.
And is that being recorded by Westboro TV, do you know?
Um, I don't know, it's, yeah, if that meeting is or not, yeah.
I'll make a note.
Yep.
Thank you, Sean. Uh, I just was reminded of a couple of other items I wanted to bring up. So Sustainable Westboro uh, has actively begun the process of preparing for the environment act, Environment Action Fair, which will be March 29th of next year. Additionally, at last night's trustees of Solch's Memorial, uh, there's a number of activities that are happening. The committee is now going to begin the process of surveying the 13 different monuments in town for cleaning purposes, understand what cleaning means there are. Uh, we're also beginning the work on the annual report. Thank you, Sheila, for uh, poking that committee as well as others to begin that process. Um, we also received hundreds of documents from a resident in town uh, going back uh, into the 1800s in regards to social memorials. So we're looking, uh, we accepted those documents and those will now be um, possibly put into the library uh, or somehow um, brought into the community. Um, we're also finalizing the North Street Monument and we're looking to better understand the dedication and cemetery memorial timelines as to what that will look like. So something that the chair, the trustee of social memorials is going to be working with, Chris Payon and uh, others with, so that's it. Thank you very much. Thank you again to Westboro TV. Uh, if there's nothing else, I'll look for a a motion to adjourn.
I'll move it, executive session.
Excuse me, motion to go into executive session.
Yeah.
Out of my mind, we weren't going to.
I move to enter into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 2183 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the following unions, Department of Public Works, dispatchers, police patrol and police supervisors, if the chair determines that an open meeting would have a detrimental impact on the board's position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 2182, to to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations and contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Patrick Purcell. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Ferris Development Group LLC, First Town of Westboro, Blacks Media LLC and Blacks Media Mass LLC, Worcester Superior Court, CA Number 2285 CV 01281. If the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Town of Westboro versus Westboro SPE LLC, Boston Suffolk County Land Corps, Case Number 19 TL 000768. If the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Westboro SPE LLC versus Town of Westboro, ATL, US District Court, CA Number 4:23 CV 12017-MRG. If the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding Westboro SPE LLC, US Bankruptcy Court, Case Number 23-40709. If the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real property at 231 Turnpike Road. If the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the board's negotiating position. And under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 2187, act under the authority of the select board to approve executive session minutes, November 12th, 2024, November 19th, 2024.
And I declare that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating and negotiating position. May I get a second? Oh, and we will not be reconvening an open meeting. May I get a second? Seeing a second, I'll look for a roll call vote.
Edinburgh, yes?
Johnson, yes?
Marshall, yes.
Kio, yes?
And Welch, yes. Thank you again to Westboro TV. Everyone have a great night.